Okay, we need to call me in order at seven, we got a quorum. So, I'm sorry for the confusion on six thirty or seven. And I thought I sent an agenda. Meg has got to start really calling on Monday, the week before, if we don't have an agenda. Make sure we get the agendas out. That's a good job for her to do. So, first thing we have is members of the public. So, I see we got a lot of public here. Does anybody have any comments they'd like to make? We can't all speak at once, but we can let you all speak at one time.
Well, it was on the calendar, on the board calendar for six thirty.
Yeah, so, but then it was announced in some other places at seven, so there, on the side of caution, if we do it at seven, nobody can complain. You know, we start later, you can't start earlier.
That's true.
There you go. Okay, if nobody from the members of the public have anything? We have the minutes and the May second and the May twenty-first meeting to approve.
I think that's May seventh.
May seventh?
Yes, it was.
May seventh, that's what it was.
May seventh and May twenty-first. That would make sense. Wait for motion.
It's from May seventh and May twenty-first.
Barry made a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Rick seconds it, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Perfect. Building studies. So Dover did meet Thursday for ten minutes and we approved our building study.
Good.
So, are you going to, you were going to try and do a summary for us? You want to wait till after Wardsboro approves it?
Yes.
And that's going to be happening next, your next...
Uh, meeting in July, I believe July third?
July third.
I believe.
There's going to be fireworks going off.
Right, next day. Oh, we're not at the, um, the parade's on the floor. But yeah, we'll approve ours and then the draft minute, the draft proposals will be, then we can finalize and we'll have a more thorough report once the, uh, must have approved.
So why don't we put, we'll put that on the agenda whenever we decide to have a July meeting?
Yes.
And then that'll be, you can lead that discussion?
Yes.
Perfect.
Are there anything for the minutes there which I just missed?
Yep.
Yeah.
Uh, Ju- this, Wardsboro's not approved the study yet. And as soon as they, they should be doing it on the second or third, whatever night they meet. And then Dwight will lead the discussion at the next River Valley meeting about it when we decide when that meeting is in July in Wardsboro.
Thank you.
Okay.
A quick question. On the back, there was, um, of the assessments, it was kind of a financial schedule.
Right.
It was hard to, an email that you sent, it was very fine print, that you couldn't actually read it.
Right.
So is that something that you can print out first so that we can...
I'll be able to, um, have a digital copy as well. So that's probably more likely what I get. But you couldn't expand it to read?
I couldn't.
You couldn't? Okay. I don't know if printed would be any better because I've seen them printed out and they seem even smaller.
Okay.
So, um, I'll see what I can do.
Or ask them if you can make those larger boards?
Yeah, well, yeah, okay, I'll see what I can do. Because normally there's several different proposals for, for a financial report.
Right.
Based on different, how aggressive you want to be. Um, so it may be several pages or many pages.
Okay.
So I'll, I'll ask them about that too, if we can do.
Thanks.
Sure.
Then, I, I was just looking around, I don't have my glasses on, but Marco isn't here, is he?
No.
He's on vacation. With his family, out of town.
Oh, he was in the office this morning.
They're back. They're back.
Well, yeah, we were supposed to have the discussion about the, about the treasurer, so let's push that off till July. And then we're going to also need the treasurer there, the financial person. Okay. Um, that's it, I don't have anything else to do guys?
We need to figure out a meeting of when we're going to meet next in Wardsboro.
Yeah. We'll do that just before we...
Communications, you talk about that at all? Just an update? Do we do that?
Oh, Anita, I'm sorry.
Anita, Anita's here.
Yeah, she's going to ask us what we're meeting next, so she can get the bucket...
That's my first question, when is the date of the next meeting? And what would you like the topic for sort of a little target to be for the next issue?
Target will be whatever you see tonight.
Okay. Um, and then, um, the Buckettville news came out electronically today. Um, so I think we're on page eighteen or seventeen or sixteen or something like that with our little column. Um, and again, it's just a push to send people to, um, the website for more info. It does say that at these next meetings we'll be revealing the great, um, grand plan, things like that. So it was pretty, uh, general. Uh, but it did say that the next Buckettville, well, the deadline is July tenth, would announce the July meeting. So if it's after July tenth, we're, I mean, August, July, August, we kind of figure out a date in there somewhere for August, I'm also after. So by July tenth, I need the August date and then I can publicize the July date. Um, just so you know, um, I do send PSAs out to everybody, um, including the Deerfield Valley News, but they have a PSA policy that they don't print really PSAs. But we have the great Lauren to cover us on all our stuff, so thanks to her, it does get in the Deerfield Valley News and it does get on calendars and everything. So the other thing I just want to mention really briefly, I don't want to go in depth, is, um, Mark, the great Mark's been helping me, um, look at some of the analytics with regard to who's going to the blog site. Um, and, uh, he printed out a couple of three months' worth of details and it's, uh, many pages of numbers, which I've only had a very, uh, short few minutes to look at it. But if, Mark, if you don't mind, I'd like to let you comment on what you think it represents.
Sure.
You killed a tree, too.
I love it.
Two actors. Cool.
Anybody want a copy of numbers?
Sure.
Peter, I'll give this to you when I'm finished. Um, this represents April first through essentially this morning. Showing we got total about two-hundred-and-twenty users. Um, most people are not coming back to the site. They come, they look at one or two pages, they're there for a minute or two, and then they leave. There was a, you can see it's a graph at the top, around April second or third, thereabouts, um, we got a large number of hits. Anita thinks that's when we first switched over to the new domain. Um, I don't actually remember that date, so. I gave you, uh, just a breakdown of a, a few things I thought might be of interest. Gender, um, and this is stuff that the Google pulls from their profile on everybody.
Cybergenetic.
Hopefully not, but possibly. Um, on the, the top of each of the graphs, um, there is a number, a percentage of the users that that represents, um, because they can't get details on everybody. And a breakdown of, um, whether people are using the mobile versus desktop, um, I thought might be of interest. And where they're coming from, you know, what, what website, um, is sending them to, to us. Majority of them are, are coming from, um, the schools' websites, Dover's and Wardsboro's. People are getting the address, um, and going directly also, which is a hun- let's see, a hundred and, about fifty percent of the, the total hits. Um, so I think the best thing for us to do is to keep getting the domain out there, um, letting people know what's, what's on it.
So, thank you very much, Mark. So, what, uh, this does represent is a humongously small sampling. Uh, Mark says there's something like eleven, twelve-hundred voters in, um, Dover, there's about five-hundred registered voters in Wardsboro, so we're only hitting a very small percent, percentage of registered voters. But then again, this is only a three-month sample. What this sometimes makes me think is that it might not be unwise to consider some kind of a direct mailing to voters in the form of something quick, cheap, a postcard, uh, doesn't cost a lot of money to produce or to mail that just says, hey, you know, we're eleven months out on take it, on, on takeover. Is that the right word? The merger, the unification. Um, and if you need to get up to speed on everything that's happened so far and you want to keep up to speed over the next twelve months as this ramp-up occurs, here's the address. And something really direct, really simple, no heavy marketing behind it, just again saying, you know, this is the fastest, quickest, easiest way to get the stuff. Uh, the high usage of desktop users tells me that Wardsboro doesn't have cell service, so everybody's using, um, internet on a wire. Um, otherwise I think the mobiles, mobile users would be significantly higher. We knew where all the mobile users were from, they're probably all from Dover. All the desktop users are probably all from Wardsboro. That's, uh, page three on this.
I can actually get you those numbers.
Yeah, so what that tells me is that Wardsboro still doesn't have, um, major cell service everywhere. I don't have it at my house. Any questions or comments or thoughts from anybody sitting here? I'd be more than happy to take your thoughts in.
I was going to say, my, my only comment as a Wardsboro resident, we were just talking about that, like, most, most of my friends I know are on Wi-Fi and are still on, just being a little defensive.
Yeah. On a mobile device. I mean, I use my mobile device to look at this stuff.
Yeah, me too. I don't, I don't open my computer ever.
Yeah, well, I'm using my iPhone in my house on Wi-Fi, I can run it myself.
That will, that will still show up as a mobile.
Right, because it goes to mobile sites, as opposed to a full desktop site.
It's, it's, yeah, it's the device, not the wire that you're connecting from.
My, I, I still have a DSL line at my house, which I think just stands...
Anita, hang on a sec. We're about half what you're saying. You guys are having a really great discussion over there, but it's not helping us any. Was there anything that was said that we should be aware of, something?
We were just discussing how people are accessing the information.
Yep.
Whether it's through Wi-Fi or cell service. Um, as you know, our community, some of them have a deficit of cell service, which could make a difference in the impact that the communications have overall. And we were talking about the fact that people are, like myself and, um, that, like, these girls are using mobile devices on Wi-Fi rather than on cellular. So it's just something to think about every time.
So that shows that it's a desktop versus a...
And desktop, yeah. A lot of, uh, uh, desktops tend to, tend to, might have an age discriminatory use, that desktop users might be, uh, an older subset than...
I, I did not give you the, the ISP that people were coming from.
No, I don't.
And I, and I can, if, if, but I don't think that, that's going to tell you.
No, I mean, I just, I think it's interesting, I mean, the, the video, you know, we didn't think that the video was getting as many views as we, as we found out it was. Um, I'm actually surprised you got those kind of numbers because, you know, if you had an election in town, you know, I don't know what Wardsboro gets, but in Dover you get a hundred-and-twenty-five to a hundred-and-fifty people vote. If in Wardsboro you get fifty people vote, you know, you've got about the right numbers, numbers there for people. So, again, I mean, we've done everything we can to reach out for people. We had the one comment that, you know, well, nobody told me anything and, you know, I mean, I think we, we tried to get the press out there, we put posters out. I know Rick and, and Barry and, and Dwight have, you know, posted things at the, the store and the post office. You know, we, we participate in the Buckettville News and the Valley News. I mean, uh, short of going door-to-door knocking on people's doors and dragging to meetings, I mean, there's, you're, there's certain people that just don't want to be reached. And some people like it that way and, you know, I mean, I, I think we send things out through the school. I mean, I, that's kind of what I'm more interested in, is there, is there another thing we're missing that maybe we could send stuff out via and, you know, maybe more people would get it? You know? I don't know, there's no, you know, there's no local television station, you know, there's the radio stations are, seem to, I don't know, KVT just changed or something, I don't think they have that fish guy in the morning anymore. So, uh, it seems like things are moving even further away.
Until you get, until you get more bodies at these meetings, the conversation's just not happening where the people are interested to be driven to the website. And I'd be more curious to how long they're staying on the website. What is the information that they're actually, you know, so...
Two minutes.
I don't, it doesn't matter to me how long they, you know, whether they get there from their, um, their mobile app or their desktop. If they're not sticking around to read what's on there, then are we...
It says, "Session duration is one minute and five seconds."
So how much of the information are they getting?
Well, that indicates to me they're going there to look for the date and time of a meeting maybe, or to go to the link that would take you off the website to BCTV or YouTube. Because once you click on that page, you, you are leaving the site and going to, you know, BCTV or, or YouTube.
You know, maybe, I, so, if there, if anybody does have suggestions, even if you don't want to, like, raise your hand and say it now, you know, hit up Anita and Mark because they, they've been helping us with this a lot. Or, you know, say something to your principal. Yep, Sue.
Bridgette and I were just conversing that nowhere in a Dover newsletter, I've never, has it been Buckettville News. I know nothing about it.
About what?
About what's on this site or why people would go there. I mean, this is totally new to me.
The Buckettville News is, is Wardsboro.
I mean, right, I, but, but what Rick said, or what someone said...
My understanding was it was going out in the newsletter, that it was getting sent home with the kids, that when we, we started the new website, that went out with the kids, that Matt had sent it out to all, I mean, am I not, not we have that conversation at one point?
And we, we're not afraid, but if we don't know about it and a parent says to us what is happening, you know, we, we can't refer them to...
Well, if it's a parent, yeah.
Are you aware of the website or just not the Buckettville News? Are you aware of the website?
Yes, but not the...
Well, well, the Buckettville News is...
I think that's the point, is that people have to utilize that, right?
Yeah.
Like, that's the point, the website's there, so...
No, but if you, you knew about the website...
Yeah, she's a little bit of a Buckettville news.
Yeah, but it hasn't been, it really hasn't been discussed much in the building. That's all I'm saying.
By who?
By any of us, by Matt, by the teachers. I'm not hearing any conversation about where can we go to find out what's going on. I'm just not hearing that happening.
Bill will deal with that tomorrow. I just made a note. Is there, are, hang, are there parents? Is there a Dover parent here?
Yeah, I mean, it's not...
Hope.
Yeah, so I would say, like, I am a, oh my gosh, what's going on? I go to the doverschool.net and it's right on there and I, but maybe I seek it out, I don't know for the people who don't seek out wanting to know.
You see the newsletter, they, they still send out a newsletter?
They do still send out a newsletter.
Was it in the newsletter that you called?
I cannot say if I recall whether it was in the newsletter. I tend to flip open to the fifth grade news and that, like, the things that are maybe pertinent to my daughter and maybe not everything else.
It's not a regular ongoing article in the newsletter that goes home with the lunch, what's happening each class.
Does Dover have an electronic newsletter that they send out? We have electronic blasts, we have a lot of electronic blasts for information.
And did something come on that? Because I thought, you know, Matt's a technology guy.
Yeah. I feel like there could have been something on there recently, like, hey, here's dates coming up to be aware of.
He does, he has a reminder for board meetings.
Okay. I mean, you know, we can only, not all of us have students in the school, so not all of us get the newsletter, not all of us...
Right.
You know, so I don't, I, I was under the impression that, Sue, I was under the impression that keeping the staff informed, because that's really, it's not the board's job to go to the individual staff, you know, we, we have a chain of command. So, you know, we'll, we'll definitely make sure that that gets out. I, I thought it was getting out, I, you know, I don't know. I'm really sorry.
Some people, the information that I was going to say, never got...
Yeah, no, and, and I, I know a guy just called me at work and said, oh, I never got the information. So I sent him the email, four emails over the last year and the three he responded to and said, well, you know, who responded on your email? So, I mean, I'm sorry, but you, you can only do so much. And we, we really have had that discussion. And, I mean, that's what I'm saying, if you guys know of another way, um, you know, please let us know. And if, like I said, if you don't want to say something here, you know, definitely talk to us after the meeting or talk to Tammy or, or, um, Matt, or, um, you know, send us an email or, or respond on the River Valley. I think there's a place that they could put comments to, isn't there Anita? Didn't we have a, a spot?
On the blog, yeah.
On the blog, yeah. Okay. So Anita, I'm sorry, you want to finish up?
Uh, no, I just need the dates for the July and August meetings, so...
Yeah, we're not going to give you an August meeting, we'll give you a July meeting.
Okay.
Another question for you.
Yep.
In the art, I read the article today, uh, Buckettville News. Uh, it said that the, um, the date of the, that we're voting on the budget for River Valley's was at town meeting in March. I just wanted to confirm, is that correct or are we voting on that in April? I mean, in February?
February.
Yeah, so double-check that in the article. I, I think it said it would be voted on in March. Or maybe I'm wrong.
At town meeting.
Town meeting, but is that, when are we voting on the budget?
February.
It'd be in February.
February. So let's, let's just double-check that. I think that's what it said.
What's that, there?
The Buckettville today. Yeah.
Yeah, the, I sent in to something like, once the superintendent's office has completed its work, then discussions on budgets begin in earnest and that'll be the budgets voted on next year, right?
Yeah, so we're hoping in September through December that we start, is that we'll, we'll work on a budget because we'll have to post the budget sometime in December. We're going to start being like Leland and Gray in the River District. Um, we'll have to get our budget out earlier because we'll vote on it in February at the annual meeting, which is the second?
Second Tuesday in February?
Yeah, second Tuesday of February.
Or third, oh, gosh.
I think it's second.
Okay.
Carrie, 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 she's got more memories.
You're right.
Because third is school vacation, usually.
Yeah, well, that'd be a good time to have school budget, school vacation.
Valentine's Day.
Okay. So I... It could be.
Could be.
Right? If it starts on a Tuesday, the fourteenth. Be interesting, see if we get more votes on Valentine's Day than on Valentine's Day. Anita, are you all good?
Yeah, we're good.
Okay. So, and Anita, I just, for a lot of new faces here, Anita's done a lot of really good work for us, both in the study group and with this group, and, and we appreciate, and Mark is, um, definitely our computer, is more of our computer guru. So, um, we appreciate that too, Mark, thank you. Um, we are going to move on to, um, we had charged, we'd spent several months giving, putting together a vision statement, a mission statement, a, um, discussing what the, the two, the culture of the schools. We came up with a list of the top ten, I believe, Dave Letterman's top ten of, you know, what's important in each individual school. All that information was given to our superintendent, who was our, um, our, the adminis- uh, this district administrator. And he was assigned to come back to something with us that this is, after all the information we gave, what's important, what isn't. This is, um, designed, what this program's going to look like, what River Valley's unified school districts is going to look like. Because of agreements that we've kind of made between the different board members from different towns, we've agreed that we will try not to make any decisions, any important decisions, um, after only discussing it in one town. And I see a lot of Wardsboro people here tonight, I think Wardsboro people probably outnumber Dover people. So, good publicity in the Buckettville News. Um, so anyways, I thinking that, um, so what we've agreed to is we, we wouldn't make any major decisions until it gets vetted in both places so that people, if it's easier for people in Wardsboro, and then I, I just was walking in with a Wardsboro resident and I said, gosh, I'm surprised she came all the way over. And she said, it's not bad, you know, this time of year going over North Street, so, um, but, you know, that's one of the things we're doing. So what I'm going to ask for tonight is, is we're going to get you some note cards and some scripture sticks. So, which Sue is bringing out now for, if you want, just, can you pass them around? So, if you have any question that you don't want to ask in public, and, and some people don't like to ask questions in public, some people don't like the guy behind the blinking red light, um, because he records you and steals your image and sends it over the airwaves. Um, if you'd like to write a question down, you can. If you have a clarifying question tonight, you know, you can ask it. And then Peter over there in the corner, he records it, as does, um, the lady from the Valley News, you know, you might get quoted in the newspaper. But we're going to ask that you hold comments, um, specific comments, um, until we get to both vet it in Dover and in Wardsboro. And the board's not going to discuss it other than asking clarifying questions or give opinions on what they like or don't like. And one of the things that Bill's going to present is two different proposals. Um, so what we'd like to do is get any feedback, clarifying questions, um, if you want to write them down. We'll do the same in Wardsboro. And then the board will have a discussion starting in Wardsboro. Next meeting, we're going to try to keep it pretty open so we can spend quite a bit of time having a discussion on this. Um, is, the other thing is, remember, the board is the one that's running the meeting. So if you have any questions or comments, I'm going to ask that you raise your hand and be recognized by the board before you just start flirting out. And if not, then I'm going to send Dwight over to yell at you. So he's going to be the enforcer tonight. So, is there any questions or comments? Bill, did you do a printup of this that we can hand out or are you just doing it all on...
Um, I'm going to be giving it digitally to, uh...
To go on the webs?
The printstools.
Okay.
So they can share it.
And can I post it, please?
Uh, it'll be after the board, but I'm going to copy this.
Yeah, I don't, there's, nobody on the board has a problem with posting it, do they? Okay. So, again, please, any questions, you know, direct them to the board. Let's let Bill run through his program and we're ready to rock and roll.
All right. Thank you, Rich. So, uh, first of all, this is new. I've never been asked to design a school district under the enormous guidelines, so I appreciate the specificity of the mission and the vision and the study committee and the guardrails and the ten things about Dover and the ten things about Wardsboro, um, and the goals to, um, hopefully, give you all, the community and the board, um, something to actually talk about that is tangible. Whether you think it's the greatest idea or the worst idea, at least you'll have the same thing to discuss. And so, my hope is that you will all engage in a vibrant conversation about the future of your community and your students. And, um, I've appreciated the professional challenge. Uh, it wasn't easy and I'm sure there's going to be a variety of responses, but, hopefully, you can all understand, uh, what I'm going to try to share with you tonight. Um, so when we designed this, we started from the mission of the board. Throughout this, I'll highlight some things that, um, when you guys discussed, were very obvious. So, I mean, one thing that really came clear to me is that everything was through the lens of a student. And I said that on Wednesday night when I talked with the, um, board of Leland and Gray towns, and that was very true as well. You guys are very committed to seeing things through a student's eyes. And I think that's important to emphasize. So your vision is very specific. You can play it in many different ways. But the thing that really came down to me was you wanted equitable resources and opportunities for all your students. You guys wanted to create something that was sustainable, that was living and breathing and was, um, uh, growing and evolving. So these are the guardrails you guys came up with. The top four I put in bold because they were super specific. Uh, the bottom three are kind of general. Um, so, uh, you guys wanted to make sure that all the responses that honored the culture were part of the design of the system, uh, that you were going to have two buildings, one in each town, um, that you had equity in transportation, both in the elementary ages and in the secondary world, that you would continue to do the network improvement community work and international baccalaureate program. And then in general, you'll, uh, expand your educational opportunities, you'll find cost savings, and you will have equality and more opportunities for your students. So those were your guardrails. So we got your mission, we got your vision, and we got the guardrails to build something. got the guardrails to build something. And so, these were important for me to highlight, just to remind you guys. The top six on the Wardsboro list are almost exactly the same to the top six on the Dover list. So the bottom four were specific to the Wardsboro responses, and you'll see when we go to the next slide, not yet, that the bottom four on the Dover slide are unique. But the top six are really important. Your traditions and your celebrations, things beyond just classroom experiences, the community, really positive learning environment with high expectations, staff is extremely important, and then, you know, being able to share who you are as a community through kid-friendly realities, such as a school mascot. I think that's an important one. So the next slide shows you Dover, and again, the top six, keeping the identity in school community, again, things beyond the classroom, the community, a positive school climate, and again, a rigorous academic program. And then the bottom four are very specific to Dover, but you could see where they would be. The ski program was addressed in Wardsboro. Field research, very similar to going to Starbase, things of that nature. So an enormous amount of overlap between the two. All right, so now we get down to your goals. You guys were very specific about this. Again, you care greatly about your student outcomes. You care greatly about the response from your community, being able to support the investments you want to make. You are both small communities, you want your families involved, you want to be able to communicate well to everybody, and you want to look to the future, personalized learning plans, making sure that students are empowered, students are engaged, and parents are a part of the system. So before we get to it, I'm going to share with you two separate options. And this is the first time that the board has seen this as a group, it's the first time that you will all see this. And these are just options to consider. I am not recommending these options as these are the only things that have to be done, but I do believe it creates a starting point for the board to have discussions and engage the community in where you guys would like to head. So, option one, or option A, this has minimal change. You're going to keep two buildings that are pre-K through six. It's tough to fit the three-year-olds in Wardsboro right now. That might be possible, but under this suggestion, it would stay just like it is right now. Dover is pre-K three through six, Wardsboro, pre-K four through six. If you want to have any core staffing changes, we would implement a school choice policy. That was one of the study committee recommendations to the board, and the board is very interested in creating a policy where there's equity of school choice, and, you know, providing additional resources so that there's equity across the schools. Different schools offer different things. We would want to make sure that they would offer similar things towards So the general benefits, in this option A, I am suggesting that both communities continue with the network improvement community, which means that Dover would have to start getting engaged in that, and I'm suggesting that the Wardsboro professional staff start getting professional learning in the International Baccalaureate. I also think that it'll be critically important that we invest some money in the specificity and uniqueness of teaching multiple grades. The Wardsboro teachers, as well as the teachers in other multi-grade classrooms around the SU were very generous in giving me the positives and the challenges of teaching, you know, like a first and second grade class, a third and fourth grade class. And I think that we should be investing some additional professional development resources in that unique challenge. Curriculum is really strong and very specific to a grade level, and when we are asking a classroom teacher, regardless if there's five students in one grade and eight in another grade, that is an entire year of curriculum, and it's very challenging. And I think that we need to invest in our teachers to make sure that skill can be increased and more comfortable. These bottom four, right here, are basically making sure that you have equity in both buildings. So you don't have Spanish in Wardsboro, we would want to make sure that there's Spanish in Dover. We have a librarian in Wardsboro, but we don't really have a library media specialist, so I think that's something the board should consider. In Dover, there's a very specific health class. In Wardsboro, that's taken care of through the classroom teachers, so that's something to discuss. And then, in Dover, the nurse is really very particular to doing some paperwork, but they're not really on site. That's different in Wardsboro, so that's something for Dover to increase. And then, making sure that we have school choice, and whatever that policy says. The general challenges is, you know, you're still going to have the challenge in having multi-grade classrooms. There's some great benefits of knowing kids for two years, of getting to know their strengths, of being able to diversify instruction, but it is challenging to be responsible for two entire grading levels. This, in general, would be about an additional investment of $70,000. And until Wardsboro would be trained and authorized, only the students at Dover would be officially getting IB instruction. Again, this is, these are options and suggestions that would have to be gone through the board and discussions with the staff. So now I will give you option B. So option B is a more integrated system with a lot more change. I would point directly to the right-hand part of the slide. And in this design, the Wardsboro campus becomes a pre-K through grade two campus. So that is dramatically radical design from what we currently are at. It would provide the availability for three- and four-year-olds to be comfortably in the building, and then have two additional, another classroom of first and second grade. I would keep, my recommendation would be to keep a full-time principal/interventionist for that early learning center. And then, basically, the Dover campus wouldn't change very greatly, other than receiving the third through sixth graders that are currently at Wardsboro. And so, if you go to the next slide, the general benefits is that you would have third through sixth grade would get single-grade instruction. The class size would increase between five and eight students in those grades. You would make sure that you keep your youngest students always closest to home. You would have a natural increase in specials for third through sixth that you would need to equalize in the pre-K through two in the Wardsboro campus. You would have some savings, so that you could reinvest that into even greater opportunities. Again, I would suggest that you have IB for both campuses. You would bring Wardsboro pre-K three onto campus. The estimated savings is about $150,000. Giant challenge is you are changing the world for Wardsboro. Kids would end in second grade, and they would travel in third through sixth, and that is a radical departure from where we are now. So I want to be unbelievably honest and respectful about recognizing. And then, I just wanted to emphasize that this is a draft plan, and it's based on the work of a study committee, and delivers upon all of the work that the board has done. Again, I would just hope that this is the precursor for a really well-informed conversation, and I am at your disposal for whatever research and guidance I can provide.
So, from the board, are there any clarifying questions?
So...
Yeah. Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry, I was... No.
I do have a question.
Yeah.
In one of the earlier slides of Plan A, in the general benefits category, you had school choice. When you're defining school choice, do you mean school choice between whether a parent gets to send their child to Wardsboro campus versus Dover campus? Were you talking more about school choice for, you know, secondary?
Thank you, good question. No, I am talking about developing a school choice policy for kindergarten through sixth grade that would problem, I would recommend it would be something similar to what we do in high school right now for public school choice, where you have minimums and maximums, and students would apply, you'd have it be a blind drawing. And so if a student wanted to attend Wardsboro, but they lived in Dover, that there was some policy and procedure that allowed for that, and if there was a student in Wardsboro who wanted to attend Dover, there was a policy and procedure.
We're required to do that.
That's part of the, one of the tasks that you have from the study.
I just wanted to make sure I knew what you were defining.
Yes, and then, right, so this is particular to pre-k.
Secondary, secondary school choice, I think in the last years, Wardsboro and Dover are very similar, aren't they?
Well, and seven through 12 would not change.
Right, but I mean, there's no difference between Wardsboro and Dover, second, seven through 12.
Everybody has a choice, and in fact, after the last town meeting, it looks exactly the same.
Yeah. So there is no difference in that.
I just want to make sure what you were defining is school choice.
So, is there any other questions from the board?
For the option B, for Wardsboro, the PK three through two, are those individual classes, or are those still combined class classes for the, like, right now we have combined classes, kindergarten, pre-K?
Yes, so I am imagining that you would have a pre-K, three, four, and K class, with the support of a paraprofessional. Also, you would have a first and second grade class, but by having less students on campus, that frees up your uniquely qualified principal interventionist to do a full range of services. So for, you can imagine if the three, four, and five-year-old class could be the current pre-K and one, two class?
Right.
And you can imagine that there could be anywhere from 15 to 18 kids in that classroom. And so you would at a minimum have a classroom teacher and a very seasoned parent educator. And then you could also have a first and second grade class, and possibly your third, fourth, or fifth, sixth grade class. And then you could create one of those other classrooms would be for the visiting specialists that would come through. But it would free up your principal interventionist to be present in those two classrooms at the, based on the students.
Okay. Very good. Thank you also. Is there an educational reason why you chose grade two?
Um, the Common Core and the NGSS, the Next Generation Science Standards, are all based on bands. Pre-K, or actually, K through two, three through five, six through eight, and nine through 12. So, yeah, I designed it ending in second grade based on the band of K through two. Pre-K is its own group.
You all set?
I'm all set. Another question, would you anticipate the same program for the pre-K three and four kindergarten, first and second at Wardsboro and Dover, meaning that if kindergarteners at Dover get Spanish class, then the kindergarteners at Wardsboro would have Spanish class?
Absolutely, yes.
So the equity and the programming?
Right, so in the next slide, when I talked about...
Oops, sorry, this one.
Yeah, so, you would have, the single grades would automatically get whatever happened of the year, but then you'd want to increase those in the pre-K to two for the equity that were the same things in option A.
Okay.
Okay, is, anything else from the board? Bill, one quick question. How many classrooms are there in Wardsboro?
There are four classrooms that are operating as classrooms.
So that's the drawback to not being able to do individual grades in that.
Uh, correct.
Nothing from the board, the audience, Aneeda?
Can you thumbnail the estimate of $150,000 savings, what that comes from?
Essentially, it comes from two classroom teachers. Two classroom teachers.
That's the, because you have two less, got it, overall, and all, thank you.
Any other questions? I can't believe...
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So, with this plan, keeping the pre-K to two at Wardsboro, you're talking, having pre-K, the three, four, and five-year-olds all in one class, and the one, two in one class?
Correct.
So, is that going to be the same setup at Dover, that they're going to have three, four, and five-year-olds?
Um, no.
In one class?
Good, good point. Uh, no, they would have three and four-year-olds in one class, and they would have a single kindergarten classroom.
Okay. So, thinking about actually...
Absolutely. So, these are the things that I wrestled with, and it goes back to Rich's question, but it's almost impossible to have exact equity, because you can't have single-grade classrooms fully at Wardsboro, and you just don't have the room. You can't have seven classrooms.
No, but if you're only talking pre-K to two?
Absolutely. So, for example, that's a great question. So, this savings could be $75,000, and you could have a single kindergarten classroom. These are the, these are exactly the kinds of conversations I want to have.
In thinking about, just throwing it out there, we have four, four rooms that are functioning as a classroom.
Right.
Pre-K in one room, kindergarten in another, first in another, second in another. You know, we talked about the, the multi-age.
But we only have one person speaking at a time.
So just, just throwing it out there, I mean, there's four classrooms, there's four grades. I mean, if you combine the pre-K, would be, I don't know.
Nope, this is, this is exactly why, I can't think of any possible answers. Thank you.
Go ahead.
I, I just, I agree with Valerie. I was not following the line, because I was, I was feeling like if we're pulling more than half of our students out of our school to give them single-grade opportunities, then why aren't we still keeping all four of our classrooms running and giving those kids that opportunity as well? I mean, so I wasn't following the savings either, I was very confused for a minute there. But I do have a question, actually, about transportation with this model, because I know families in Dover, that their children have a 30-plus bus ride in town, so now if we're talking about kids that are on the far, out in south Wardsboro, as a third grader, are they going to be on the bus for like an hour and a half? Like, what is that, are we having 100 buses? Like, what does that look like?
Sure. So, I don't know the exact answers to that, because that's one of the specific challenges that I would want the board to task me. What I would imagine is that you would have a separate system that runs in Dover, and you kind of have an express system that runs from Wardsboro. So I don't know if that would look like a collection of students from Wardsboro and gathers at Stratton Arlington Road, and then takes a direct shot. You know, you might, we might work in partnership with our current bus system of West River that works to a collection point, and then we have a separate bus that could be owned by the River Valleys that does a direct shot.
So you think the bus takes kids from Dover to potentially Stratton Arlington Road to a different bus, and they would switch buses there?
I haven't played it all out, but that kind of, no, these are the, absolutely.
And I'm only asking as a parent who has a bus stop, and my kid doesn't get picked up at the door?
Sure.
And I mean, I hate where our situation is now. If I had to drive even further for a bus stop, it would make me crazy.
It would be highly probable.
As a working parent, it doesn't work.
From the board's point of view too, we appreciate that. And just understand, not every little minute detail.
Sure.
Because one of the things, I, not to speak for Bill, but as a board member, and I think as public, if it was to be that we only, we had four classrooms and one kid in each classroom, you know, it's going to be tough justifying a teacher for one student, because I know the state would definitely come up with Act 93 and a quarter that said if you have less than five students in a classroom, you better not, you know. So, again, not everything has worked out, but these are the kind of things we need to know so that we can task, like Bill said, after our meeting in Wardsboro, we're going to give them a whole list of things and say, "Okay, we like part of option A, and we like part of option B, and you came up with option C." You know, can you kind of put that together and see how that looks for us?
Okay.
So this is really important, and we really do appreciate it. I'm going to go over in the back corner there. Yep?
Thanks for starting the tough discussion, Bill. With option B, how, how do we maintain Wardsboro's identity, stopping grade two?
Agreed.
For, for a student?
Sure. I wanted to change a thing that you have on your list. The thing that would change is that anything that was on that list that you don't do third through sixth would be a new combination. But if you have a morning ritual that you do on Fridays, you would still do that, it would just be focused on pre-K through two. So, the song choice might be different. You wouldn't get rid of your mascot, you wouldn't get rid of PBIS. But I think we have to acknowledge that when you have half the kids, it would be, be a different situation. I think you would do everything you possibly could to retain the things that you have in your list of culture, but I think that's absolutely one of the challenges.
So, did the committee feel strongly about the IB schools? Is that something, Bill, that you chose to put in there? Because that's a big part of culture and identity for Dover and not for Wardsboro. So, how did that?
So, based on the guardrails, the network improvement community and the IB were to be continued. And so...
Can you talk about the network improvement community? Is that what you call them?
Jeezy, jeezy, that's a kind of embarrassment.
So that's our acronym for the work that Tammy, Chris?
As I may.
Yeah.
When we're going to talk to you or anything, we're...
Okay, I know, all right.
So part of the guardrails was, those two things were going to be incorporated. And so, yes, part of my design is that everybody participates in both.
And then, network improvement thing is specific to Wardsboro, it's not to Dover, but we, because of the equity thing, you have, you know, that's why we put it, the board, I'm sorry, added that in the guardrails, that both of them had to be there.
So, my bad.
No, it's fine.
We have talked.
No, it's great that we're talking about.
It just wasn't at the top of my mind.
No, but it goes back to Valerie's point of, you know, what, which things are we going to do and keep, and which things are we going to share for equities.
Aneeda, and then we'll get back over in the corner, next slide.
Back in the Paleolithic era, I went to two schools in 12 grades. Can you comment on any possible perceived... Can you comment on any possible perceived potential impact of sending kids to four schools over 12 grades?
How do you get four?
Or three schools, three schools over 12 grades?
I do not have any of the research at my fingertips.
No, I just thought about that.
No, I've got, I've got, I will tell you that in my, on Wednesday, when I did my draft of that, a student would travel to four different schools from age three through 12.
I, I personally think it's a good thing, so...
No, but it, again, it's different people have different perceptions.
I was wondering.
We want a robust discussion.
Go ahead.
I don't know. Um, so, I mean, I, I feel like there's a lot of energy surrounding option B, and, but am I right in thinking, like, well, this, is this something that you guys are getting some feedback and deciding? Is this something that's getting voted on? Like, what does this look, what's the next phase of this?
Right, so the, the next phase is, is again, we didn't want to make any, I was hoping that the board would not express any opinions saying, I'm all for A or I'm all for B, and I was hoping that we would get questions on things that, because remember, it's a huge change. So we don't know, you know, Bill's presenting some options, not an option, there's not an option he's going to say, if you don't do option A, I'm out of here. That, we're hoping to get a lot of input, we're hoping not to give any opinions until we get the ability to present it in Wardsboro, because that's one of the things this board has agreed to, that we'd like to do it in both towns so we can get as much input as we can. We're hoping that you guys write a whole bunch of notes or questions or thoughts. We're hoping that after people watching on TV, they'll, they'll go to the blog and leave some messages, or they'll come to the Wardsboro meeting to express their opinions, and then we'll take all that into account, and then the questions that you have, that if Bill can find the answers between now and then, we can address them in Wardsboro when he, you know, updates his presentation a little bit. If there is anything to update, and then we'll have to start having those discussions with you folks, with the public, the parents, the, the, the teachers, the administrators, and then see where we go from there.
But ultimately, once you guys have all, if you've gathered all that information, you guys make that decision of which option, A, B, C, or D, whatever comes down the line?
That, that's a decision of the board. And I guarantee, I will promise you that there will be people that will not be happy with the decision, no matter what we decide. Are you all set?
Uh, yeah.
We can come back to, go ahead.
Hi, Bill. A question. Why, and maybe I missed something because I was here a little late, but why are, oh God, um, grades three through six, the only ones considered for single-grade instruction and not pre-K, adding in the three-year-olds, kindergarten, first, and second?
Uh, so in designing, uh, an option that was different from the first option, I came at it from the premise of keeping the youngest students closest to home. And so I just started with the concept of we were going to make sure that the students that were up to grade two in Dover and the students that were up to grade two in Wardsboro were going to stay where they are.
Gotcha, thank you.
There, there's also been a lot of, when we looked in the preschool back, not as far back as Aneeta was talking, but somewhere back there, um, you know, we, there was a big thing about the younger students need to be closer to home because that's when more accidents happen, or they need their mother, or they need their dad, or, and we really, to, to draw a younger child further away is really difficult. Like, we went, I went with Wyndham when they presented their proposal to the state board or to the Department of Ed, and one of the things they asked is, they said, well, you don't mind your high school students going down Wyndham Hill, but you don't want your little kids, you know, your, your preschoolers going down there, and what's the difference? And, you know, the difference is, you know, when your child's in fourth, fifth, and sixth grade, third grade, usually you tell them to do something, they'll do it, they'll follow, they'll listen, you come in, and, you know, the classrooms are a little more organized. You go into the kindergarten and the preschool, the kids are all running around, and you stick them on a bus, and then, you know, it's a lot worse. So I think that was, you know, um, some of the, the thinking too, and has been some of the thinking in the past.
Sorry, just a follow-up question. So then that means that pre-K, three-year-olds through second grade will still have choice, though?
Um, so I don't...
Or, or are kids in Wardsboro who are pre-K two go to Wardsboro? Or do they have choice to go to Dover?
So pre-K three and pre-K four have choice universally across the state.
Okay.
Right? And I would, again, it would be a board decision, but I would think it would make sense that if you're going to have a school choice policy, that you have a school choice policy for the continuum of...
We, we have to do that, we're required to do that because that was put into the, the articles, and that was part of what you voted on. So if, let's just say we all agree that there's just going to be one school building, then there is, we don't have to worry about a choice policy, but as long as there's two campuses, which is one, was one of our guardrails, there'll have to be some choice policy. It'll just affect tho, those grades that have two buildings. If, if we were to decide to go to one building for some grades, then it falls back on the state school choice that, which, is it for, there is for elementary.
Not between the two twelve.
So, yeah, it would just be for whatever grades are in the two buildings. We're required to come up with a policy or procedures for that.
Go ahead, and then, Tim, do you...
Um, Bill, in your thinking on option B, did the resources and facilities at, physical resources and facilities at each of the buildings play into any of your planning?
Well, when you only have four classrooms at Wardsboro, it changes the, uh, flexibility of how many students you can have in the region.
Right, I was thinking overall in terms of everything about it, the playgrounds, the ball field, the number of bathrooms, the size of the library, that lunchroom, that...
Sure. I, I focused on the actual classrooms.
Okay.
Some big things for me in designing this were keeping the youngest kids closer to home, uh, putting the oldest kids as possible on a bus, kind of talking about your point, respecting exactly what currently exists while addressing the board's request to give them some options with some possibility for financial reinvestment.
I grew up in a town, not unlike Wardsboro in Connecticut, and, um, we, my brothers and I were the second kids picked up in the morning and the second kids dropped off at night. So we rode a school bus for 45, 50 minutes within our little town, and the whole town only had two school buses. I was on Mr. Armstrong's bus, and he was not the fun driver. And so, uh, I, I don't know, um, I realize the challenges of our roads and steeper hills and less paved roads are different here, but, um, I, you know, I, I got a lot of homework done on the bus ride home.
Sorry. I just, I just keep looking at this, and I think about the early meetings that we had, and there's, and I'm sure you're going to hear this more, but I, it, I wasn't going to say it, but I am. I feel like it's the slippery slope to closing Wardsboro. I feel like, you know, you can't keep, if our Wardsboro identity is just grade two and under, that's not really Wardsboro Elementary School identity. You know what I mean? That's like, it, I feel like that's going to get lost personally. Um, and I'm not even opposed, like, I was a parent who was not opposed to the schools merging. I work in Dover, it would have been great if my kids went to Dover School for years, it would have been way easier. But I'm thinking about our community, I'm thinking about the teachers. We've had a great experience, um, and if, and I, I just feel like, once you add choice in there, now you've got less than half of the students that you had, it's going to trickle and bubble to, well, what's the point now? We've only got, you know, whatever students, um, and I, personally, I mean, again, I think the three-year-old program, like Mount Snow is starting their three-year-old program, they just got licensure, so we already have you guys, and we have, you know, Mount Snow, so if Wardsboro is adding a three-year-old program as well, there aren't a lot of kids, so that's going to be like a couple kids in each three-year-old program, it's going to be almost none. Um, so anyway, that's my piece. I just feel like it's the slippery slope to closing Wardsboro School.
That's one of the things, though, just, I, I'd love to respond to that because, you know, one of the things is, I think, is guardrails, that's why we've, we're very specific on the buildings, and, you know, option A does that for us. I do remember during those committee here, you know, when we did the study, and, you know, that was one of the reasons why we said we would have to come up with a, a policy on, because we didn't want to let one school become empty. You know, and it may not even be what you think, there may be a lot of people in Dover that think, hey, I want to go to Wardsboro because I like the combined grades, and then all of a sudden, Wardsboro is so full, you can't have combined grades anymore, and you don't have, you know, enough room there. And I, I think there are some constraints, it would be a lot easier if the building itself in Wardsboro was bigger and, and could hold the single grades. But I got to tell you, as a school board member for a lot of years, I would fight ever closing from Dover to ever closing Wardsboro completely, because I could never see that, because you need to have that building there for the younger kids, and you need to, and one of the things, and I get, luckily Laura's not here tonight because she'd smack me upside the head again, but I, I disagreed with Bill and Matt for a while, um, on the preschool stuff and, and going to three-year-olds and, and going to full-day stuff, but because of that new, the change in the law where, you know, the money goes with the child for preschool, um, you know, we need to have a really robust and a really good preschool program, and I think by offering it in two buildings, and even if, if everybody said, let's move everybody out of Wardsboro, I would fight to at least keep, um, the, the preschool, have a preschool center, an early learning center there, and even a kindergarten, and maybe, you know, maybe go to a single first grade or something, because those are the young kids that really need to be closer to home, and, and you don't want to, you know, you don't need to bring them all into one big area. You know, maybe fifth and sixth graders, it's a little bit better because they're going to be moving to a bigger environment, you know, more students, bigger class sizes, so maybe that's good for, for fifth and sixth grade. Um, you know, I don't know, and we really want to hear from you guys, but that is going to be a huge challenge because, you know, um, people, like kids in the country, um, Timpson Hill, Mount Snow, they're all getting licensed in Stars, you know, the certifications that we have for our preschools, and it's going to be a challenge again, because it's going to be, you know, more public dollars going to private entities, that we're really going to have to work hard as a board to make our program attractive, that even if you work at Mount Snow, you still want your child to go to, to the Wardsboro or to the Do, or to the River Valley program, and, and that's going to be a real challenge too, on top of the challenges of trying to figure out how we're going to, going to structure everything.
Could I add something?
Yeah.
So thank you for not holding back. I mean, uh, when I'm building this, obviously, I, I can see the whole continuum, but that's the point, right? Let's have this conversation, let's be transparent.
Sure.
Let's see what the fears are, let's see what the hopes are, so that when we end the process, we've discussed it all, and we've become one.
Yeah.
You know? I don't want things hidden away, and so, yeah, I'm sure I'm going to get a lot of vitriol for even just putting it on a PowerPoint, but that's my job, is to cultivate the conversation, so that when you guys get to the place you get to as a community, it's solid, it's been transparent, and things have been discussed. So I, very much appreciate it. If we don't discuss those things, we can't know where we want to be, so.
In the back?
Sorry, another Sarah White question. So, um, I, oh, I say I'm sorry all the time. Um, so with, I don't know if it was A or B, but you're talking about three-year-olds to kindergarten in one room, and first and second in another room, that leaves two classrooms empty.
Well, actually, in my mind, it was your current classroom and the pre-K K classroom would take over pre-K through K.
But it would only be two teachers?
It would be one teacher, one parent educator.
Pre-K, two K.
Correct. Now, of course, that's all dependent on numbers, right? You guys, and in, in Wardsboro, you average between five and eight students per class, right? So I was thinking, all right, if you designed something that's between 15 and 18 students, but if you went to 21, then you'd have to reconfigure, totally different.
Okay.
But yes, I was thinking, on one end of the building, you'd have those two rooms.
Two empty classrooms, though?
Well, no, then I would put a first and second down in another side.
Down in Valerie's classroom. Using two classrooms?
Well, you could.
One be one classroom.
Or you could have one classroom, and then one would be a health room, Spanish room, art room.
Gotcha, okay.
But again, I haven't gone that far down, because I don't know where you guys want to go, but I had to go far enough to at least imagine.
Uh, Penae?
Yes.
Have you thought about how you would share your specials? For example, you've spent language here in Dover, Wardsboro doesn't, if there is a cost savings of using our Spanish teacher here, bringing that to the Wardsboro campus and what that would look like, or?
Uh, no, there's no cost savings, because we're increasing the amount of time we're hiring somebody.
Right.
But there could be continuity by what you're teaching in kindergarten is the same thing, what you're teaching in first grade. So I'd work extremely hard to hire the exact same person so they have this same curriculum.
So you're not looking to share necessarily the person that you have in Dover?
Oh, I would absolutely look to do that.
Okay.
But I don't know if that's possible based on that person's availability.
Right.
But that's what I was shooting for.
But there, there also isn't any savings because they're not...
No, I know, it's not savings.
Right, you're...
Well, you're working towards equity.
Maybe I'm looking at equity.
That's a primary, increased opportunities, we're looking for equity, we're trying to...
So one of the things, just so everybody knows, I don't know if it's, can we announce the, can we talk about the art teacher, or the music teacher, I mean?
Sure, she's on the contract, so.
Yeah, so, you know, Dover and Wardsboro will not be sharing a music teacher through, um, agency fund through Wyndham Central, which is something that started 30 years ago with Frank Rucker and, um, one of the previous superintendents, Tom Lewis, where, you know, Dover isn't big enough to have a full-time music teacher, neither is Wardsboro, maybe neither is Townsend, so the Wyndham Central hires the teacher, and then they allot their time where it's needed. So a teacher's guaranteed a full-time job with benefits, and then they do 50% in maybe Townsend, and 25 or 30 in Dover, and 20 in Wardsboro. And we've been doing that for years, and, and when I testified at the State House to the Senate and the House Ed Committees, they, you know, they look at us like we have three Eds. I brought it up in Brattleboro one day, and a lady from Guilford came up and said, why can't we do that? I'm like, I don't know, you've got the business manager that, from, uh, from Wyndham Central that started it. So there are some things that are going on like that, and, and what it does do is it creates a, a better job for a person who then isn't trying to like fill in their time here and there, so it works out really well. So I, I think it was a really neat move that, um, Tammy and Matt started working on that now, so, I mean, that's kind of the start of stuff.
Go ahead.
So, I'm glad we popped back to this, because if, if, say we went with option B, if that won the day, and Wardsboro, so if you're saying that Wardsboro would have ages three to kindergarten, so you're saying five, maybe six-year-olds in one classroom, one big, great big classroom, and then at the other end of the school, you have first and second graders in one classroom. So you still have teachers doing multi-grade, so wouldn't that investment to help guide them through the challenges of that eat away at that possible savings that's presented in option B that looks so enticing?
$150,000?
Yeah, I mean, like, because you'd still have to support those teachers to be multi-grade, you know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah. So the investment in professional learning happens in both.
Regardless?
You've got to do both.
Okay.
Because as long as you keep multi-grade classrooms, you've got to have extra professional development. As long as you're going towards IB, you've got to have professional development.
Okay, so I, just that investment wasn't on option B, it just looks like, hey, there's a savings over here.
Got it.
There's an investment over here, which makes it look like you're going to spend money on A, and you're going to save money on B, but...
Well, that's good, that's, that's good, too. Um, I, I tried to handle that in option, uh, B by saying that there were even more than just those professional developments of, to be reinvested, but what you're saying is that not being specific about it doesn't give the imagination for the possibilities.
It looks like you're saving and there you're spending.
Got it. No, that's, that's helpful.
And again, you know, this is, these are guestimates based on...
Yeah.
Big numbers, because, you know, we don't know transportation-wise, I mean, can you tell me what oil's going to cost next year?
Nope.
And, you know, so how much is transportation going to, you know, increase or decrease? So these are just kind of broad strokes.
Yeah.
And those are the kind of things that, once we kind of are able to say to Bill, okay, let's narrow this up a little bit, then he can get us some better, realer numbers. It's not really a, a worth doing a lot of investment now to...
No, I just wanted, I just wanted to verify what we were looking at, because, you know, sometimes that simple language can be enticing.
Right. So I would just emphasize, I'm not endorsing any option. What I am endorsing is a conversation, and this is to get it going. What I am endorsing is a conversation, and this is to get it going.
And I just wanted to be clear. I wanted to...
But I think that's, that, that's extremely valuable for me.
Yeah.
Because this is the first time I've had a group look at this.
Sure.
Tammy, can you make a note for me?
Yes.
So this question, obviously, is on a personal level for me too, and I'm not the only one who has this question. What is that going to look like as teachers at Wardsboro who obviously don't teach pre-K to two?
Sure.
You know, does that mean that we're automatically cut? Does that mean the schools look together how we're going to consolidate?
So if there was a necessity to have less employees, the board would create a process that was respectful of all master agreements that are currently agreed to, which are multiple, and come up with a transparent process in which to staff those positions. I have no idea what that would look like, because that is so far down the road before a decision is made. But I can guarantee you that it would be respectful of the current master agreements that are in play, and it would be unbelievably transparent.
Okay. That makes it easier to sort of think.
Absolutely, no, again.
You know, if you...
You see this, you're thinking about it. I appreciate you asking.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so just to be completed on, someone has to...
Right. And it, yeah, I mean, the, the process could look like a variety of things. It could be over time, it could be anything. But yes, those tenants would be absolutely clear.
Okay.
And even, even if he goes with plan A and there's some changes, you know, he may have to recommend some different staff for different, however it's going to work too. So that, that's one of the things that we're trying to work on too, is, is once he gets forward, is how that fits in with the contracts, because they are two separate.
There's a lot of people that sort of feeling like, what's that going to look like? You know?
Thank you.
I had to put it out there.
A lot of...
Go ahead.
Just to clarify, so this ends with the board. You make, I mean, obviously with our input, but you make the final decision on option A or option B, say. Or whatever that's going to be. Does that need to be approved by the State Board of Education, or does it stop with us?
No.
We're on our own here.
The only, only time I, I don't believe we'll ever go to the State Board unless we do something so atrocious that somebody would complain to them and say, hey, to the Board of Ed, if we decided that we were going to cut out all, all kindergarten and first graders and you go figure your own thing out, you know, that would be something that, you know, could be argued for them. But no, we can pretty much, the board has, um, a lot of leeway. But let's just say the board said, hey, we don't want first grade anymore, we're going to just do away with first grade. Bill, as our administrator, is going to say to us, no, that's bad. And then he's going to, you know, argue why we shouldn't be doing it. And then if, you know, we don't do it. But no, it's, the decisions are made in house.
I guess I would be worried that if they have to go to that, the money or the, the number crunchers may say, hey, look, option B, $150,000, you're doing that, you know?
No.
So we wouldn't have to fear that.
No, and that's definitely, you know, leaves the community...
Right, okay.
It's locally made.
You, you have done the work that was required under Act 46. The Wardsboro community and the Dover community followed the letter of the law and created the River Valleys Union School District. You are compliant. Now you are in the discussion mode of what you're going to do once you've done that. But I agree with Rich. You can't be overruled deciding on what you want to do. You guys could say, we're going to keep things like we are now, and we're going to invest another half a million dollars a year and do these things. That's up to the community, you know? I mean, when you guys make decisions educationally, you're deciding to tax yourselves, tax your neighbor, tax your businesses, and tax your community. And you guys get to decide as a community what you want to invest in.
Any, any other questions? So, well...
I actually have a question.
Oh, go ahead.
Tammy, based on your numbers from this year, do you have a sense of what the classroom sizes would be for grades three to six? You know, how, how big of a class now would be?
Sure. Um, so there, we're in grades three and four, we had 15, in grades five and six, we had 12.
Any, anybody else? I was going to throw one last thing out there, see if you guys will throw something at me. Go ahead.
I have a question. So I know that a lot of the schools are now kind of going, dropping sixth grade as a thought, right? And that's a middle school now, right? Is that something that...
We can't do that. So...
Okay.
Like, if the West River presentation that Bill did, that's his, was his, one of his options. We went to the state and we sold to the voters a pre-K through six. So that structure has to stay. And the other problem with that is, is with us having, there aren't a lot of tuitioning middle schools that have sixth grade. Most of the middle schools start at seventh. So we would be kind of, if we wanted to do something like that, we would almost have to commit our sixth graders to like Leon and Gray, if that's the model the West River group goes with. And then that's really not giving your child school...
Twin Valley's sixth grade also.
Oh, did they move to sixth?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I just, just...
So there would be two options there then.
And, and Mount, I mean, Mount School potentially is also, right? So basically, all around us, I think even the Bradroom, six now?
There's seven.
They're still seven, they're seven, yeah. So that's just a question, I mean, that's...
So that would be possible after this. So during this...
Okay.
So the, the River Valleys pitched pre-K through six.
Okay.
All right? But that can operate for a couple of years, and you guys can reimagine.
Or they can do it now. I mean, you could, you would.
No, I'm just, I, I mean, I saw the models for the other district, just, I see they're planning on, you know, in those options, sixth grade goes to Leon and Gray now. That was just my
Yeah.
question.
I've actually argued that in Dover for a lot of years, that we should let the sixth graders go to a middle school and do a true six, seven, eight middle school. Because, you know, sometimes, there's a lot of students who are ready to move forward, and it's almost like you're holding them back in the smaller group.
Right, yeah, just, it just varies.
But I got to tell you, if there is a, if there were a push for that, that could be something that could be brought up, and we would check with this, this education department and the State Board to see what we would have to do. And that's something that can be presented down the road.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not saying I want that. I was just questioning that everyone else around us seems to be headed toward that. Is it...
It's really...
Just hold our kids back if we don't.
Sorry.
You know? It's really only Twin Valley that does six through 12, because the Mountain School and Marlboro go pre-K to eight.
No, yeah, Leon and Gray, their talk, their models now are going towards six.
So they're changing it.
Townsend, Jamaica, Newbrook, Wyndham.
So I'll just caution you there.
So early in that discussion.
No, I know, I know. What every model that I saw
We're like here.
was, was the same thought process in that. So that's just, if we're talking about it and they're talking about it, mm.
Glad it's summer.
Uh, you know, it's, we're, I don't know.
Go ahead.
You know, the thought is that the standards are set up, six to eight. And it really is, you know, teaching five, six, it makes it really challenging to get that six to eight band in when they're not even in the same school. So...
You know, in, in Dover, I don't know if all of you know, but in Dover for a long time, we had four, five, and six combined with different options. I mean, Sue, what did we have? One year, we had like a four and a five, six, and some years we had a four, five, a five, six, and some years a six and a four. I mean, what we were trying...
It depended on number.
On the students, the numbers, and actually, the individual students. And, you know, Bill or Susan or Matt would talk with the, the prince, the, the teachers in that grade and decide what the best situation was for the, you know, for the students and for better outcomes. Anybody else? Yes?
In option B, you're talking multi-grade classrooms in Wardsboro, would the younger kids in Dover be in multi-grade classrooms also, or would they be separate?
I think we had that earlier question. Three and four would be in multi-grade, but kindergarten, first and second would still be in single grade in Dover.
So it'd be single in Dover and...
Correct.
And again, one of the hard things about that is just the setup of the buildings. There's not even, you know, even if we wanted to do single grades in Wardsboro, just not enough space.
Well, but I would say, if you did pre-K through two, you could have single-grade teachers in four separate classrooms. Three and four-year-olds would be in one, kindergarten one, first and one, and second one. As Valerie pointed out, that's a possibility. I, it never really entered my mind. So, but I...
I misunderstood. When he said three, four, I thought he was saying third and fourth grade, not three and four-year-olds. So I was just asking, I was like, wait, why are we moving then if we're going to keep them in a blended classroom? You asked a question.
So the other thing, remember, I think Sue Newman handed out some paper. If you have any questions, or if you want to bring something up that you maybe think your neighbor might not be happy with you bringing up, you can write anonymously in there, you know, a question or a comment. Um, and then if you don't mind, you can give them to, to us in...
The red bucket.
The red bucket.
The red bucket.
Put them in the red bucket. I'm going to throw one of, is everybody set? Is there any other questions or comments? Because I had one thing I was going to throw out.
I was just going to ask, so I know that like the Dover school will have a Facebook page, and maybe more people look at that than our newsletter. So if I have authorization to send this link after this is done?
Oh, yeah.
Posted on there.
It's an open...
So that's fair. Yep, so that might help for our next meeting, once we have that other one, that, because I think when people see this, it might get the conversation bigger, so.
No. Please, yeah, please. See you already for Wednesday.
I know.
Any other thoughts or comments for anybody? So Bill, I'm going to ask you to do just one other thing. If it's not too difficult. So one of the difficulties we found is, is the Wardsboro building itself with the, the size, to not be able to do exactly what we may want to do. Can we throw like a, a, a option B plus or something in there? What about if we were to not use either building and build one building on the town line or something? So half of it is, or if there's a, a kind of a, if we had a center spot between the two that everybody could feed into? Because if we, if we could save some money, I mean, if we could save 150 to 200,000 a year, that could pay a bond issue, and then we could have everything we wanted. The building could be designed for the individual grades. And that, you lose your culture, but maybe that's something people would want to think about.
I don't know if that would... Is it possible to wait until the presentation was shared in Wardsboro?
No, but I mean, just another, looking at that tonight. I mean, there may not even be anything that we could ever do, but it just...
No, I mean, I, I am just happy that conversation will occur. Because at the end of that conversation, you'll all come to one place and we'll move forward. That's the dream.
Anybody else would like to?
I am.
Pardon? Are you all set?
I am.
Okay. Um, so we got to pick a, a night to meet in Wardsboro in July.
The 23rd, I think.
Is the 23rd good with people?
Is you okay with that?
The 20, I think the 23rd.
Hmm? No.
Rick, are you okay with that?
I'm not positive.
Is there a good night, better night for you?
I, I think that's because I'm on vacation, but I'm not positive whether I should be here.
It's okay.
Just say that at 3:00 or 3:00.
I don't know.
Budget planners?
No, not getting a budget.
No, with them.
I'm fine with it, it's a 23rd.
So you got one, two. Carrie, you're all set, right?
Yes.
Three. If you can make it, that'll be four.
I'm fine.
Okay, Rick, why don't we, we'll shoot for the 23rd and just let us know?
It's fine.
Okay.
What time?
Seven.
Wardsboro, seven.
Seven.
Seven, be there at 6:30.
7:00 PM in Wardsboro, July 23rd.
Get seats.
And you're not going to give me an August say, second or third?
I, do you guys want to...
Do you have a mail at you?
Do you guys want to set an August meeting or not?
Because then I can get distracted.
I know, I just...
We have, we have an August meeting set for some reason. No, no, that's just not going to count.
No, we, we have the two meetings, I think, that we were going to do.
Meet me twice in August?
Well, actually, I would defer to the Wardsboro board members. Do you think it would be better to have it at the town hall?
No, I don't think so.
I mean, I don't...
It's more intimate, I think it's cool.
And even, if it got bigger, we could always move into the gym, right?
Yeah, we can move, we just need a projector. It's fine, though.
Yeah, why don't we do it at the school then? Because, I mean, that's what we're talking about. And then, you know what, maybe people that don't, you know, there may be some people that don't understand why we're not doing single grades over there of K, pre-K, and you can go look.
And it's not as small as everybody, like, it's, it's not as small as it's kind of...
No, I know, but if people aren't...
We're small, but not that small. We have technically five classrooms if they really want to, you know, so, and they're bigger than...
When I first started working there, there were 80 kids there, so.
Yeah. Oh, you know, we had more students in this building before the addition. And it worked. And then we built the addition, they all ran away.
So how is that possible?
Are we going to meet twice in August, or do we want to...
So what, August, nothing yet?
I, you know, we're missing a board member. I, you know, Rick, can you, do you know what you're doing in August?
Yeah, I'm here.
I mean, I know, as it stands now, it still says first and third Monday, so if I need to undo that...
Tuesdays.
So I'm not here on the 20th or the 27th of August?
Oh, Monday, sorry.
If you're looking for August.
Are you okay in August?
It'll be August 6th.
Okay, so listen, guys, we had set, we had set the first Monday in Wardsboro and the third Monday in Dover.
So we're meeting, right.
So, why don't, why don't we just stick with that for now?
Two meetings in August?
Yep. Because we'll have, made our presentation in July, and that'll give us like two or three weeks to get some feedback. And then we'll meet, so we'll meet twice in a row in Wardsboro, and then we can start hammering with Bill. We can narrow stuff down or expand, you know, we can start giving more guidance to Bill. So we can say, hey, everybody really liked the idea of, you know, maybe the, the fifth and sixth grade going to Dover from Wardsboro. So you, you know, you got to redesign this with the third and fourth grade staying in Wardsboro, whatever we come up with.
So can I just make a pitch that if you're making those type of decisions, that you do that after school starts? Because the week before?
No, because if we do it when school starts and we start going there, then you're not going to have time to put a budget together. So we, we, our calendar has shown that in August, we would have to make a decision. September through December.
No, I get that, but you might have a lot of parents going on vacation who want to be part of that meeting that aren't here.
Well, then...
Including myself as a board member who wants to be part of that.
Well, I don't know what to tell you, but if we put it off too far, then you're not going to be able to get a budget together. You have to have a budget on...
No, I understand.
So...
It's a consideration.
If we don't start having the conversation in August, it's not going to happen.
Right, if you have two meetings in August, you have more opportunity for conversation.
Right.
Stick with first and third Mondays, then.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, Bill, this is going to be available on the website?
Uh, yes.
Okay. So if you have friends that couldn't make it tonight, you know, it's on the website. Bill's going to get it out on the website, let people know. We'll have a meeting in, in July in Wardsboro, and then we'll plan on, there'll be a couple meetings, and hopefully we can start to narrow some stuff down in August, beginning September, first meeting in September. Bill, that would give Bill, um, October to kind of work on a budget that he can present in November. And by December, we need to finalize a budget to, um, to get warned, because we will have a budget vote by ballot in February.
February.
And we'll get those dates.
Do I have the board's permission to create an electronic feedback form?
Yeah.
And put it underneath the thing?
No, I thought we were going to do that.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. And then anybody that's got cards, please leave them. And if you come up with something outside of, of the meeting, that you can't do it electronically, you know, if you just put your stuff in an envelope and drop it at the school, we'll make sure we have something available at the schools.
So is that, is that a survey you was talking about? Is that a, your survey, based on the...
No, he's going to do just, if you have comments.
Comments, comments. So you can feed, post comments on the website?
Yep.
Okay.
I'm here on July 25th.
You will?
Yeah.
Excellent. So, okay, we got a good quorum. Okay, is there any other business anybody wants to?
Thank you, Bill.
Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second, Barry moved to adjourn.
Second.
Rick seconds it, all those favorites say aye.
Aye.
We're done. Thank you, folks. It was a really good meeting, some really good comments and feedback.
Thank you, Bill.